I know that we uh we can be into breaking workshop session. Do I have a second?
Next second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, well, we two pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have um few, we received the two communications this morning. Um, one was related to public school message for the war in Israel. Um, the one that's, they indicate as horrible trend. It's not really horrible in terms of, they're linked to our schools. In the article, just the title. The article was about the trend where people are not letting their school work. The example of the article was Wall Township, where you don't let them go to school work. And that was the trend that this author was talking about. It was a very concerning article. The other communication relates traffic safety, student performance. Um, question about the New Jersey policies who became, do things that became expansion. Remember, this is a workshop meeting tonight, so we're gonna go over the different topics in the agenda. And you want to make reports, we will not be voting on it for tonight. We will be voting again in two weeks or, we're voting in two weeks. So we will at that point, maybe have mid supreme, if I'm doing on here right now. So we'll move to watch student representative reports. Okay, so we're gonna start off Irving, as usual, you don't drill. Irving will be hosting a school-wide food collection that we give to their families in need this Thanksgiving. Uh, please consider donating if you happen needs to do so. Uh, also, the Irving VTO Glow party was very well attended, and they're thankful for the support. Uh, last from Irving, their affirmative action committee is continuing to put together bookshelves for families to enjoy throughout the year with their children, which is pretty cool.
Uh, over at Bardot, the students will participate in Ruby Bridges Walk the School Day. Um, and on November fourteenth, they will have a meeting with Ruby Bridges herself, which sounds very exciting.
Wonderful.
Uh, and they will have their annual illusionary assembly on November sixteenth. Um, and lastly, the Highland Park High School's drum club will perform on T zero of their fall party pubs. So, Bardot on November twenty.
Oh, that's so cool, I wonder if she goes to it.
Has to wear the shirt.
I. Look, I have a job to do. At the middle school. The Asian Culture Club will be hosting a D W A event on Tuesday, November fourteenth at four p.m. They invite students to join them for delicious Indian food, panna and hui. The Glow students made spider doughnut using doughnuts, pretzels, and M and M's on Halloween in their science classes. They were about to actively like an experiment in the lab report, and the students got to eat their creations. Also, the middle school would like to congratulate, well, congratulations, both of the soccer socks. Uh, they would like to congratulate following winners of the Halloween costume contest. Elliot Spurley, shouldn't, um, Shanaiza, Shanaiza Hamilton, Kai Brooks, Aiden Pres- Presisian, Iona Bryson, Hollins Smith, excellent spooky spirit, everyone. They would also like to congratulate the Strangos class for winning the annual door decorating contest. Continuing, continuing with the congratulations. The eighth graders won the middle school's pep rally and received extra time with their recess today. Finally, the middle school won the shout out Sami Gomish for their honorary mention in the NJ votes for candidates video contest. Congratulations, everyone. And Andrew, is the mic on?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's get right into it.
Aye.
Don't be shy.
So, over at the high school, Highland Park Tech has won a mycel that the elementary students traditionally gave to us. Um, and they are taking orders until November ninth. Um, the tech that made the wish final, but it was so highly advertised inside, was very successful, raising over three thousand dollars from the main village foundation. Um, and Highland Park Tech, combined with the Glow program, is holding an apparel sale. Um, and you can purchase apparel using the U four plus thing down in the air. Um, the Glow students also had a very successful trip to the question and coincide with the meeting on public transportation and fashion safety. And. The, the high school was very happy to report that the annual hosted house held last Monday was very successful. Um, and made thirteen hundred dollars for the fall classes. Uh, tickets for the whole production of pubs are on sale now, and tickets can be purchased on hbrdrama.net. Last week, the VSAC was administered to all sophomores and juniors. Uh, and we are very happy to announce that with a ninety-two percent participation, uh, there are all students that are here with the ticket. And lastly, uh, the middle school will have its annual service day on November twenty-second, uh, which is a great day for students to get involved and, uh, to pursue their services.
Thank you. We are, any questions for our super guest? Thank you very much. Uh, we're gonna move to some prepared reports. Uh, we'll move to our. Okay, so tonight, I will be sharing our, um, New Jersey Student Learning Assessment results for the spring twenty twenty-three administration. Uh, the results of the, this entire presentation, the results can be found on the district's website tomorrow when I post the board bulletin. It will be posted in Google Slides format for accessibility use. That way, if you have extensions, um, that you need for, um, accessibility, you'll have access via Google Slide. So there is a lot of information on the slide, I'm not going to read it all, but again, it will be accessible to everybody. I'm just going to do some notable highlights tonight. So just a reminder about assessments as part of our cycle of teaching and learning. The New Jersey Student Learning Assessment and assessments are just one component of the cycle of teaching and learning, which is based on the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, which is our guide for curriculum, um, and for instruction. There are five levels for the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment for math and E L A. A little bit different for science, but for math and E L A, there are five levels. Level one, if you're, get your child's score and you see red, that means they did not meet the expectations. If it is orange, it's level two, they partially met expectations. If it's the yellow, level three, they're approaching expectations. Green, level four, met expectations. Level five is blue, exceeded expectations. Our hope is that our students get levels four and five, uh, which means they either meet the state standards or have exceeded the state standards. So the first, uh, package of test results I want to talk about um, is a comparison chart for our, um, E L A administration for the percentages. So please note that, uh, through all of the presentation slides, our percentages might not fully round to, it might not fully equal a hundred, and that is due to rounding. Um, and in grade nine rows include grade nine students only. So for English language, you can see the grade is administered in grade three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, nine. And you can see the different levels. This is a comparison from our spring of twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. Uh, so some areas, um, and again, I'll talk about multiple achievements at the end, and you can see in some areas, um, for example, in grade three, we had a zero percent of the students get a level five in twenty twenty-two, in third grade, and zero get a five, um, in twenty twenty-three at that level. But you can see that, um, in some of our areas, the, like, there's, you know, students of, um, where we've had some, some, some increases and change in some areas where we've had, um, some decrease. So for example, in ninth grade, uh, we had fifteen percent of students achieve level five in twenty twenty-two in ninth grade and twenty-one percent in twenty twenty-three. And again, in some areas, so you'll see that shift because in some areas, um, we had more students achieve at the lower level, and now we're seeing a little bit more shift toward the higher level and vice versa. Our next screen shows the, uh, percentages again between, um, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. This is a more comprehensive slide because it shows the percentages. So what you'll see is the percent change in levels. So in grades three, um, the shift from level one and level two was minus six percent. So that's not good, we don't want to see the negative sign, we want to see a positive shift that our students are leaving that, um, that category going into another category. So you can see that some of our, our areas, um, we had some, some growth in, um, and, uh, some areas where we haven't had some growth. The next screen for our comparison three on the percentages at levels one and two. So this is only another one and two, and this is our comparison data to the state data for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. So you can see how the district farred for each of the grade levels compared to the state level. So for example, in grade three, um, our students in level one, we had twenty-eight percent of our students compared to the state in twenty twenty-two at level one, which was twenty percent. So we had a higher percentage of students that were at level one. Um, same thing with, um, in twenty twenty-three, we had thirty-three percent, the state average was twenty point seven percent. So again, in some categories, you'll see that our percentages, uh, are a little higher than the state average in some of our categories. Um, and, sorry, my screen is changing, I may also try to fix our technical issues here. And, uh, in some areas, um, we're a little bit lower. So for example, in grade five, in twenty twenty-two, we had, um, fourteen percent of our students at, um, level two, and now we're at fourteen point seven, so it's slightly increased there. Same thing with approaching expectations and meeting expect, uh, approaching expectations and meeting expectations. So you can see some of our percentages here, I'll focus on sort of our students and our meeting expectations. Um, so again, you can see that our, our students in twenty twenty-two, for example, in grade three, we had thirty percent of our students meet expectations in twenty twenty-two versus the state average of thirty-six percent. Um, this year, twenty-seven point four versus the thirty-six point seven, which is the average. But you can see in fourth grade, for example, we had, um, last year, we had twenty-seven percent of our students meet expectations versus the state average of thirty-five percent. But now we have forty-one percent of our students meeting, uh, expectations versus the state average of thirty-six point five percent. So again, all these, these numbers will be available on the website, so you can see our change, um, in each of our categories. And same thing with exceeding expectations. So you can see, for example, in grade three, um, you know, in twenty twenty-two, we had zero. We, uh, same thing at level, you know, at level, uh, in this year, twenty twenty-three, zero percent of our students meet, or exceed expectations rather versus the state average last year, six point two, and this year of five point three. Um, you can see, uh, you know, in grade seven, for example, in twenty twenty-two, um, at exceeding expectations was twelve, twelve percent versus state average of twenty-one percent. Um, and again, still a little bit lower, you know, a lot lower for our, you know, for this year's, um, results as well. Our math percentages, uh, so something important to know before we go into the math percentages, that grade eight data. Some students in grade eight participated in the Algebra One assessment in place of the eighth grade math assessment. So thus, math eight outcomes are not representative of the entire eighth grade as a whole. So at that point, the students will split off, so when you see our math eight, it's not the entire eighth grade class, just the students that sat for the math eight assessment versus the Algebra One assessment. Algebra one, two, and geometry data, the students in grades eleven and twelve are not included in this information. And again, percentages may not total under due to rounding. So you'll see this same kind of chart. So this is overall for the district in terms of our percentages at levels one, two, three, four, and five. Um, and so you can see again, grades three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, and then Algebra one, geometry, and Algebra two. And in terms of percentages, um, where we were last year versus this year. Um, again, I, you know, want to focus on our meeting expectations and exceeding expectations. So you can see some areas, um, where we had, um, some growth in, in moving in that category, and other areas where we had, um, a little bit of a, of a shift in decline. One of the things that was important to do for, um, algebra and geometry is to break that out between the middle and high school, especially because I know there's been concerns with some of the math results at the middle school. But I wanted to highlight here to, to parse it out because our middle school students actually, uh, performed really well on the Algebra, um, NJ S L A test. Actually, of, of, more than well, considering personally, high school students that didn't perform as well. So I wanted to highlight that, that, for example, you know, our students, um, last year, we had zero percent of our students achieved a level five, exceeding expectations, and then this past year, we had, or twenty twenty-three, we had six percent. Um, in twenty twenty-two, we had fifty percent of our students in middle school, um, reached meeting expectations and, and twenty twenty-three, fifty-six percent. So we're really excited about that shift. And even again, with level one in twenty twenty-two, we had six percent that got a level one and zero percent in twenty twenty-three. So we're happy with the middle school shift, um, in, in that category. Same with geometry in high school. We had, uh, for example, no students in Algebra one or geometry meet level five expectations. And you can see a lot of our students in the middle school are hovering around either level two or level three respectively. And then in terms of percentages, you can see here the, um, the split here in terms of the percent changes, um, with, with the shift for, uh, for our students. In addition, how we compare to the state from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. Again, some, some areas where you can see where we are performing better than state average in some of our categories, and other areas we are not performing below, uh, below state average. I'll focus here on, uh, our level four meeting expectations, where you can see, for example, our, um, areas for, uh, notable, again, I'll talk about our notable achievements in just a minute, but you can see where we are performing, uh, a little bit above state average in, um, some of our categories, and then below the state average, uh, in others. So for example, in geometry, um, you know, last year, we were at, you know, sixteen percent, um, at level four, you know, versus the thirty-eight percent, but you can see that we went down this past year. And that could just be a shift because we had students move toward, um, exceeding expectations. And that's on this screen here, so you can see that our students in geometry are shifting. Uh, again, algebra, we've had some increases in, um, in achievement, which has been good, again, mostly. Well, the overall, when you put the middle and high school together, there's a decline, but our middle school has been, um, been, been parsing out pretty pretty well. For science, there's four levels of achievement. We have the red, which is below proficiency, yellow, near proficiency, green is proficient, and four is advanced proficient, so they just have one less category. Our New Jersey Student Learning, uh, Assessment for Science is administered to grades five, eight, and eleven, and measures the student's ability to utilize the science and engineering practices to explain scientific phenomenon appropriately. So we need a, a skills-based assessment rather than a content-based assessment. And so our percentages again are here except for, instead of five levels, there's four levels. So you can see where we compare at each of the grade levels, uh, compared to our last year's data. So you can see, for example, in grade eleven, we had thirty-five, last year, we had thirty-five percent of our students achieving a level one versus, uh, this year, twenty-three percent. Last year, twenty-four percent at level two versus twenty twenty-three at fourteen percent. Um, and at level three, which is meeting our expectations, twenty twenty-two, twenty-eight percent, and now we've increased after thirty-two percent in twenty twenty-three. And then thirteen percent in twenty twenty-two versus now thirty-two percent at twenty twenty-three. So we're seeing a big shift, um, in some of our science data as well. And you can see that here on the screen, so we want to see, um, a, a good trend in terms of, you know, less students at levels one and two and more students at levels three and four. And then here is it broken out, our data versus the staff's state data for our science um, in terms of below proficiency and near proficiency in our different grade levels. You can see that we're still, you know, hovering again around, um, state average in some of our, our levels. We're, you know, slightly below, but I think being below at levels one and two is, is pretty good. We want to be below those state averages, so that means our students are faring better in the other categories. And you can see, you know, in some remarks, we're, you know, at level two here, we're, we're above state average. Um, you know, for eighth grade, um, at level two, which means we have less students at level three and four. So let's kind of focus there with our students being proficient and advanced proficient. So you can see how we fare, um, against the state. So we have, you know, mostly our students are faring above average, um, except for maybe eighth grade for advanced proficient, we're slightly below state average this past year, but otherwise, we're, we're percentages, we're, we're above state average for those students either meeting proficiency or being advanced proficient in the science assessment. So some of the notable achievements, um, so again, we've achieved above state average in the following areas. In grades four, E L A, forty-one point four percent of our students met expectations. In grade eight for E L A, forty-two point three percent of our students met expectations. Like I said, in science, we have a big achievement, so in grade five, twenty-five point eight percent are proficient and eight point six are advanced proficient. In grade eleven, science, thirty-one point five percent of our students are proficient and thirty-one percent, thirty-one point five percent of our students are advanced proficient. And then in the following areas, we achieved above state average increase in the following areas from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. So grade eight, E L A, uh, we had a plus nine percent increase in, uh, either met or exceeded expectations. In grade six, E L A, a plus eight percent that met or exceeded expectations. Grade four, uh, math, plus eight, plus six percent of our students met and exceeded expectations. In grade five, math, seven percent increase in met or exceeded expectations. Grade five, science, uh, a plus seven percent increase in those proficient and advanced proficient. In grade eleven, science, twenty-three percent proficient and advanced proficient. So what are our next steps? Uh, we share these reports with students, uh, caregivers, staff, and administration. We continue to assess the skills of students using a variety of assessment methods. So these assessments are really important to us, it's one piece of our puzzle that we use to instruct students, it's also one piece of data that we use to provide interventions and ongoing support. So one of the things we do is we look at this data, and this might trigger our teachers to recommend students for, um, tier-two or tier-three interventions, which is, uh, pull-out, depending on, on where they fall in this. Um, that doesn't mean they qualify for intervention, but it puts us on, puts them on the radar. And then we have other assessment, um, and data points that we use to determine if students qualify for some intervention, uh, services in math and E L A only. And, uh, other, for science and math and E L A, we use a lot of tier-one interventions in the classroom. We continue to analyze all assessment data and use the data to make instructional programming decisions. And we continue to reflect and monitor the progress of individuals, groups of students, and adjust our instruction accordingly. One of the things I want to note is that I'm really proud of Highland Park. We have been a, uh, which wasn't an achievement that we had to, uh, share according to the J D week, but I wanted to share it anyway, within ninety-two percent, uh, participation rate in our state assessments. So I want to thank everybody for participating, for encouraging our students to participate. I know assessments are not everybody's, uh, favorite thing to do, standardized tests are not enjoyable. Trust me, proctoring that is not enjoyable, if you're a proctor either. Uh, but it's something that we're required to do, I know for graduation requirements, they are required, so that totally helps our participation rate, because you cannot opt out now. Um, but it was great to see that across the board, that our students are participating. I think what's helpful that I want to note is that we've been using the data to earmark students for intervention. One of the things we've been hearing is that the students weren't taking the test as seriously. Um, you know, where we, we see that they achieved low, obviously, in a state assessment, but are achieving high in some other category. And so that disparity is, is, you know, concerning for us, and we question that. We've had, we also use a lot of local benchmark data, and we've, um, had a, a large number of students that have been, or parents that have been wanting to opt their students out from getting local, uh, benchmark assessment data. Please encourage your children to take, take those assessments. Although they might not be normal grades in the gradebook, it's really important data to measure growth, uh, for student achievement. That's a lot of data that we collect to help in personalizing different key instruction for students in the classroom. And we have a lot of great resources for intervention. Um, but we need students to take our assessments so that we can determine, um, what their, their needs really are. So, uh, that is the end of my presentation, and I'll open up, uh, to questions afterward.
Thank you, Christine, I just want to say thank you, it's a lot to take in. And so, I appreciate you questioning the notable achievements. I'm wondering, what, what would you think are your areas of most concern? Um, you have taken a question like this.
Yeah, I think right now, our areas of concern are, um, our high school math, uh, early, like, our algebra and geometry. Um, it's a big concern, but I think that is the group, like, last year, we saw the middle school data, our sort of seventh grade data, especially eighth grade data, that going to algebra, eighth grade data wasn't great last year. The problems that we have with our middle school and high school is, is my area of most concern because students, um, need to enroll in a class for a tier-two or tier-three intervention. So if I'm a middle school student, I qualify for both E L A and or math intervention. Um, in order to, to take those classes, I have to give up something. So oftentimes, it comes with the excessive world language. And I know they love Miss G and, and Miss Garcia and love participating in Spanish, for example. So oftentimes, parents do not want that to be missing that great opportunity for world language, and so they decline going into intervention, and that becomes a real struggle. Uh, and we're talking about a couple of grade levels behind. So just for reference, our tier-one interventions are suits that are maybe just slightly in some areas below grade level, and we can target those interventions in the classroom, so those are called a tier-one interventions. Tier-two or tier-three are more intensive, and that's when students are several grade levels behind. So when we see students that are struggling on state assessment, we then want to look at our local data and saying, you know, what is going on, what is the future here? And if we, if we think there's several grade levels behind, we do have specific tests that we can administer to students' assessment to determine their grade level, to be able to determine the intervention that, that works for them. The middle and high school is probably an area of bigger concern is because, um, it's harder to get caregivers to, um, comply with, you know, my degree to having the students in, in a support class or intervention class. I think at Bardot, I'm really proud of the progress that they're making at Bardot. We now have two math interventionists and two E L A interventionists. And in addition, we've put into place, uh, we've struggled in the past with subs. And so what I found was that we've been using our subs for intervention, uh, our intervention is as subs, and not really oftentimes giving the intervention as much attention, um, as it should have been. And so that, um, has stopped, we put in other support to provide the sub coverage when needed, to making sure we're not pulling our intervention, so that the students have more routine and consistency for receiving those interventions. So at Bardot, I am concerned, but I think the things that we have in place for Bardot will see a greater change this coming year. Um, uh, middle and high school seems to always be a challenge in terms of trying to figure out a schedule that works to get the students to help with any, without the sacrifice of, uh, world language, for example.
So do we have any sort of alternatives? I mean, this does sound really tough enough to craft, right? People don't want to miss world language, they should have, ideally, if you have a million teachers and a million new subjects and a ton of flexibility. I mean, what are our alternatives here?
And the, I mean, right now, our alternative is that we just try to, we try to encourage, um, students to take the intervention classes. We thought that we don't have anybody enrolled, we do have, have students enrolled. Uh, we've also been trying to put into place stronger programming within the classroom to, to target that, but it is challenging if I'm a math teacher trying to teach, um, dividing a fraction by a fraction in sixth grade, and a child is operating at a second or third grade math understanding where they're not even understanding what a fraction is, and it's, it's very challenging. So we, um, you know, we're trying to provide, we're trying to provide resources in this, from beginning, the E L A and math classes, um, to help during the station rotation model, that students can get the support that they need with, with some programming.
So the idea is like, for, for example, for ninety-three, it'd be like, you know, maybe one intervention class. How does the scheduling work so that, you know, it's not, but let's just talk about eighth grade and this. So, you know, for, for eighth grade, there's usually math intervention, there's different kinds of math intervention. But is the issue just that, like, there are no math intervention schedules?
It's, there's, the scheduling becomes very hard because they have to have science, they have to have social practice, they have to have core classes. Um, and then they have math physics, that's a requirement, so there's certain things that are required by the New Jersey Department of Education. World language isn't one of them in middle school. So, and it's like, well, these are the ones you have to take, and then what does your schedule allow you to do? Um, that, that is very hard to be able to fit it in because it has to sacrifice, do they want to sacrifice, you know, an art class, or they sacrifice a world language class, like, what are they? It has to be something, because there's only so many periods in the day that they can fit it all in.
Wait, so world language is required in, in middle school?
No.
Oh, I thought you said it was, I'm sorry.
We're done, we're done.
So they know that aren't required, or, oh, world language, I guess, in middle school, and what they have to take on the state year are?
Yeah, I have to think there's so much requirement for them. And then makers base it well because that hits the text standard. And then major space as well because that hits the tech standards. They have to buy eight grade show proficiency that they met the uh eight point, eight point two standards as well. So uh there are sort of requirements for the New Jersey Superior Standards that they have to be by eight grade.
So everybody's speaking major space. I mean, is there, is there other ways to meet any of these requirements? You know, like the, the tech requirements can just be built with the science stuff now? I mean, this is like.
I mean.
So it frees up the major space?
Well, they could accept that we've been using some, we've been trying to use a financial literacy status that are required. And instead of having a kind of financial literacy class, which we can't fit. We're even now putting those in. So right now that's, but our focus is trying to get major combined financial literacy standards into civics and math and science and where we can so that we don't need to have a class for that. So that, because that's required, we've already been working on, on that one. So it's, you know, it's a work in progress. So they're always looking at that. I mean, honestly, the biggest, the sort of development schedule is trying to fit it in.
Um, and so I think, this is embarrassing, but I think I've never been on a curriculum committee and I didn't actually realize that we have New Jersey tech standards.
Yes.
So I'm back in major space?
Yes.
Uh, I know, I'm just trying to remember my kids' experience in major space. I'm doing, there's only like a lot of typing, um, and some like, you know, wanting to use the internet.
That's, that's many years ago and they don't do that anymore, but.
Oh, it was like four or five years ago.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's, yeah, the standards have changed and the regular has changed.
So, so major space has become much more rigorous?
Yeah, so it's a lot of design thinking and then problem solving.
But was it something thinking in your?
Design thinking.
Design.
Um, I just have a question on how this data compares to the benchmark data that we um felt the testing were happening at the beginning of the year.
So that's a good question. I could certainly have the curriculum committee follow up with Michelle to get some more information. I don't have that available.
I also wanted, I also wanted to ask an opportunity to ask how it compares to like the P S A T scores and S A T scores.
Okay, yeah, so I'll bring that up with Michelle and she can back us to that. I know I gave a question because I don't know if the S A T or K S A T numbers are the same. I'm not sure about that. So I have a just question if you're asking about that. Like our benchmark data aligns with the New Jersey Superior Learning Standards. Um, I don't know if P S A T or S A T does. So they don't. Allison, oh, okay, Allison, go ahead.
Hi, um, somebody's mic is not working. So I'm not sure what all of the questions that were just asked were. Um, but if something, if, I'm not sure which board member was asking the questions that you said the curriculum committee would follow up on. But because we couldn't hear them. So if they could just shoot an email, that would be great.
Okay, I'll have, it was, and she was, uh, Allison asking about uh the, how this data compares to our benchmark data from this year.
Okay, um, to follow up, I know that typically you guys look at data on subgroups. So looking at performance across special education students, but all of that, are that data going to be presented at a later meeting?
Yeah, that's presented at a later meeting. That data comes from the, that has not been released from the state yet.
Thank you.
Christine, I'm also wondering, you can get a little bit of, of a sense for this? If you look from like third grade twenty twenty-two to fourth grade twenty twenty-three, you can, if you look diagonally, get a little bit of sense of change.
Right.
But it might be interesting to see what that change is like for, like a COVID group for, for like third or fourth of it. But so if it looks eighth grade, it's going to be sent for a minute.
Well, they have like two.
Right.
There's no doubt.
But you'd still be able to see in like three, four years.
Yeah.
Maybe you should see like over time, like especially given pandemic, but also just to see, I think Alice, you know, see that data in that way.
Allison, were you able to hear that? Maybe we can now, okay. So Dan uh said that maybe following like the diagrams, we're comparing third grade to third grade, but like third grade is now fourth grade, right? And things like that. So maybe more of a diagonal COVID movement if Michelle will put that together. And then also, um, you know, with the caveat that there's a couple of years, like the COVID years are a little bit of a blank. Because we don't have any data on that for the state or for teachers.
Christine, I'm hearing that people are really having trouble, not just Allison, hearing the board members, so anything we can do to them?
You can speak into the microphone, you're a teacher boy.
Yeah.
You're a teacher boy.
The more volume, the more feedback, so.
Why haven't you?
The more volume we go up, the more feedback we get in here. So if we, you know what I mean? It's kind of like.
Yeah, I mean, there's a balance. We're just gonna have.
There's a balance.
Again, I just call, I, the hybrid board meetings, I'm glad we're able to do them and for participation. It's very, very challenging. So please, I just, you go turn up your, speak in your mics as loud as you can.
All the mics are good.
We're trying our best and um.
Sometimes it works better than others, so I thought perhaps there was something to change.
Did it get more like? You're not like, so A F wasn't very close to remind me in there because we're in person.
No, no, I can, I can pick it up.
Okay.
We can say that's your last, last meeting.
Yeah.
From some reason about others, I thought there was something in between.
But the last meeting wasn't just, it wasn't just probability to the microphone. It was literally several microphones not kicking up.
Right, 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 right.
If I weren't better, you'd find me.
No, because then it's gonna get me bad. Yeah.
No, yeah, it's just this environment.
Yeah, it's a.
It's just this environment in here. The more gain we go up, the more feedback we get.
Okay, the more gain, so our type of thing, more.
I, I, I can't turn, I can't turn up one person's mic without getting.
So we're, we're restricted on how high you can go here. So we're trying our best.
So if we took, we all turn off our mics when we're not speaking, does that help? Because you can, no, it's not.
No, yeah, it's more about the, the level of gain in the, yeah, in this.
You have to shift the speech here.
It's more about, it's more about this atmosphere than it is about the microphones.
Something to put my voice in quiet, I can, for example. So it, yeah, have the base reports.
That's.
I just wanted to know more. Well, I, um, I thought it was interesting that the state data didn't seem to change much over the years. That seems pretty consistent where ours, you know, some went way up, some went way down. Um, I'd also be curious to see the numbers from, you know, before the pandemic. You know, were, were we always bouncing around?
Well, that, yeah, so that would be like three or four years ago. There's a red for the past few years, so that would be.
Right.
But I was actually gonna look at that when I do, so.
The address.
Well, we have to submit our school performance data by mid-December. And then usually they went to early spring, they put out our school performance report card, which is what goes public in the state. So I was gonna present all of that because that includes the quantity of the data. That's all of our stat, state data. So I was gonna present that with our school performance data um as a collective to look back at, you know, right like before the pandemic, the pandemic, and then now. So that was my snapshot.
That would be helpful, thank you.
Coming soon when that happens. Coming soon in the spring. Okay, the second, yes, the second piece of my uh report tonight, um, is not formal. It's just a note that our next board meeting, we're going to uh hope that you would consider passing uh the resolution to submit our Q S A district performance report, our V D R. So every year, the district has to submit basically our quality control. So we go through, we form a small committee and uh it's usually me, myself, Denise, and uh our offices that pulled together a whole bunch of data that we look at fiscal, governance, which is policy, uh personnel, um, and instruction, curriculum and instruction. And what we do is we go through and making sure our, we have curriculum documents that are updated and align with state standards, that our personnel documents are in order and correct. We hit timelines for evaluations, that we are within um our legal um capacity, okay? Our bill on time and being physically sound. So it's a lot of nuance uh for our quality control. So we submit a performance report that's our grading of ourselves. The committee reviews it, signs off on it, and then we send it to the state. This year in particular, we're being monitored. So we submit that and then they come in in the winter. Usually after the new year in January, February, and then they actually review it. So they ask for sample data and then they review it to make sure, did you grade yourself correctly? We want to see that you did, and they will. So the, my first recommendation to the board at the voting meeting will pass the V P R, which is our um approval Maryland since on that committee to review the documents with us. And then in the winter, they'll come and do it formally. They need to walk through and look at our facilities to make sure our facilities are up to COVID pyro code and things like that. So it's a pretty intense process that they do every three years. Um, and this is our turn. And that's my report, thank you. Thank you. Uh, we're gonna move on to committee reports, uh, curriculum and instruction. Allison.
Okay, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, um, so curriculum instruction meets next Tuesday. We have not met since our last public meeting. Um, the item on the agenda, our resolution to approve field trips as attached to the agenda. We'd like to extend a thank you to the H P E F who are graciously funding many of our trips so that our students are able to go um have experiences outside of school. So thank you very much to the H P E F. Um, we have a resolution to approve the following job descriptions as listed. These were jobs that, these are jobs that exist. Um, it's just that previous boards never approved them. So we get the job for approving them now, um, and we will do that at our next meeting. Um, the resolution to approve the learning language disabilities program at Irving School effective this school year. Um, this is a program that was started this year, so we have to technically approve it. Um, and to save for the autism program at the Highland Park Middle School, we also need to approve that program. And I believe, Christina, correct me if I'm wrong, we have to just do that formally with C A M E to make sure that um we are, you know, fine. Um, and number five is to approve a new course for the school year, uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, which is the zoology and animal behavior course. But we're going to be looking at the course proposal at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Have a question.
Any questions for Allison? Okay, we'll move on to equity and excellence performance.
And that's it for you. Now that's our last public meeting, we'll be meeting on the sixteenth this month.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then we move on to finance facilities and that's my report. Um, and I can say, and I've emailed everybody, so you've sort of, you know, obviously you've read it. It looked like a slideshow. But financing facilities, that on October thirtieth. Um, and Rob and the, and Jen, joining John Quine again, uh, Mr. Rosa, Dr. Posey. I had asked for the meeting, we'll sort of add it to our, our meeting calendar. We, we are planning a meeting on November fourteenth from general finance facilities meeting. But uh my goal is to really focus on these two preschool expansion building options. And um Denise and Jacob uh putting together very detailed uh power set, PowerPoint to really compare the two options financially, most, you know, the financial uh focus. So hopefully you'll get the slideshow. Um, and as everybody knows, we're trying to come to a decision on which direction we go for preschool expansion. Our actions, and we talked about that at our meeting again, is building the vision of Bardell or going with the P three, which is a public partner partnership. That's our, it's a piece of property on the way to our new project. Um, and really the bottom line is that, uh, these for me was that for Bardell, we go out to public for referendum, pay that twenty million dollars for building. Um, and then we give us at least nine million left for some of the much needed facility projects that, you know, like bathrooms and generators and so forth. Um, for me, was new information at our meeting, or at least I kind of picked up recently, which is that um to go out for the referendum, there will be a cost to taxpayers um because our debt service doesn't end until twenty thirty, which frankly, I don't say is right, I've worked on it. So it'd be four years of cost to taxpayers uh until that debt service is paid off. That's one possibility. That could be made for the four hundred dollars a year um for, for households um to for us to build the Bardell vision. Uh, at the moment, I know that um Denise is looking with our bond, lawyers, and other possibilities of how we can play with that money and maybe not make it so that we have to do those four years of cost to taxpayers, but right now that's where we are. Um, and then after the four years, we'd have a debt service line that this money could be paid from. Um, and of course, with P three, we can't go out for a referendum. So that building would be built by the ownership property. Um, and we'd be paying about one point three million a year once it's built, if we get keys, uh, for thirty years, and then that building will be ours. So that number might come down a bit once we figure out the specifics of the building itself, but it is an amount that has to come out of our general operating budget every year. Um, so that's a decision that we all need to make. And I think whatever twentieth, it's gonna be our thing to regard it. Our next meeting, whatever it is, the twentieth, I think, is one that we really have to come to a decision. So otherwise, uh, the district really can't afford it either way. And of course, you know, we're doing this, just to remind everybody, because of the mandate for preschool education. Um, and of course, because we believe that's a really important, uh, important thing to offer our community and to provide our students to get the start of their education. So the state will again look at those slides. We'll see the state pays for salaries and supplies, um, furniture, and I think portion of benefits, but um it doesn't find facilities and that's transportation, that's the rubber stuff. Um, so we are gonna meet down the fourteenth. And one more thing I'll add, that's wasn't necessarily financing facility, but we did meet with the mayor's office, um, uh, also sometime in the last two weeks. I forgot what date that was. We met Matt Hale, Boydus, and Terrence Jomer, and the, the mayor. Um, and we talked again, these building options with them as well. We're meeting again next week with their lawyer who notes P threes and our bond lawyer um to continue to explore the P three option with the, with the bill. Okay, questions on financing facility? Oh, and that's the agenda, that's the agenda, sorry. So for us, for financing facilities, it's kind of short, it's only eight items, which is longer. We have a new list, um, for October, uh, the cafeteria and general new list. Um, then what follows is what uh Allison said. This is a wonderful list of opportunities for our students that were getting through the education foundation ranks. So we thank them very much. It's a great list of trips and experiences that our, that our students will have. Um, a resolution is gonna be through travel expenses, uh, for some of our staff. Uh, we have some conventional contractors to approve um for bilingual evaluations, also for some behavioral pediatric developmental evaluations and something with the giant evaluations. These have some pretty specific needs of some of our students, it's like. We also have a resolution to approve uh two at district placements. Um, one is the student that we think have been here but needs a more specific uh type of instruction to meet the school and another to uh pathways, cabinets, some stuff like that. We have two students who, uh, that are in need of that type of instruction that would be on our agenda. Um, three students, um, that are, can be mentored tuition students that present our students to our displaced, um, and they need to, uh, on their, to pay for their tuition. And um the last one is to approve the E S D A grant amendment, the amendments to the application. And there's a title one, title two, A, and title three change. Let's all just check it out. Okay, now any questions for financing facilities?
Yes, I have another question. You mentioned your meeting with Mary.
Yes.
Uh, will part of that discussion be trying to get them to commit to payment uh the pilot to the school district from what many funds are receiving from the federal?
Um, we have, we have, we, no, yes. No, not, not to this next meeting. This next meeting is focused on the P three and what, what their lawyer are allowed to know about that issue. Um, but yes, we have brought up the pilot money at our other meetings that we've been assured that, that, I say, at the end of the year, is why I keep hearing, um, that we will be paid on the pilot money for the year. Am I safe to say that? Yes, and what they have to do is apparently every year they have to pass a resolution to approve that money to us. My understanding now is that the borough hasn't actually been paid on that property yet. So once they get paid on the property, they can then pass a resolution to pay us off property. That's why they're waiting for the end of the year, it's a lead, it's that. That's what we've been told. It hasn't been said that we're not getting money. Correct.
Okay.
We do, we do keep that. We, we, we ask a lot, whether. Thank you. Other questions? Nope, okay, then we're moving on to personnel. Can we add one?
Okay, personnel, excuse me. Um, I'll start with the agenda and actually, let's see, I just lost the agenda. One second please, yep, I got it now. Scrolling up. Uh, okay, most of these are pretty self-explanatory, but I'll pull out a few things. Um, number one, we have a termination of an employee. Two and three, we have a change in the athletic billing, uh, person in charge of athletic billing. Um, let's see, paraprofessional compensation. Number five is very exciting. We have uh two. We have, uh, two HP community members, we're going to advise a middle school Dungeons and Dragons club. I assume these are fellow Gen Xers like myself who played Dungeons and Dragons program. That's very exciting. Um, Christina, uh, explained in the committee that any community member who advises, uh, program has to have at least a substitute certification, so we're very lucky that at least one of these volunteers does have that. Um, let's see, we have some additional compensation. Um, number six is para receiving extra compensation. Uh, that's for a classroom in which there are certain physically challenging behaviors that, that this para will, uh, be, uh, be dealing with. Um, a toileting stipend, number seven. Number eight, nursing, we're lucky to have a nurse, not lucky, we, I'm glad that we're able to secure a nurse to cover a Bardell school, uh, student, uh, engaging, participating in chorus. That's fantastic. Um, Ms. Jennifer Corr, at the business office, will be doing extra work to comply with our CSEC requirements, including, um, the job descriptions we talked about, figuring out which job descriptions needed to be written. She's making sure that our health, our employees' health paperwork is 100% separate from all of their other filing. Um, I think we're pretty good on that, but she was just going to go through and make sure that we, there were no, there was no, no health information that was in the main employee files. Um, let's see, 10, 11, self-explanatory. Uh, 11, it's kind of interesting, you know, what our high school students are doing for independent study. There's a list there. We're not offering multivariable calculuses here, for example, but Mr. Lee will be advising at least one student who's doing it independently. Let's see, uh, middle school buddy ball, that's the last item. That is, um, it's in place of adaptive physical education for, I believe, two students at the middle school. And some of our high school students will be coming down and assisting with that program and receiving some independent study credit for it. Um, okay, we have, uh, number 12, uh, preparation for PD. 13, eat days of dialogue positions. Let's see, 14 and 15, staff for our brothers mentoring program at the high school, near the middle school. I'm sorry, at Bardell, in the middle school. Hey Christina, am I correct? That's for our students of Harvard?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Uh, let's see, number 16, um, uh, TRM and Linda Moran are, uh, becoming site managers, I believe, in the upper school programs, which with an increase in pay. And Mr. Friscia is, got one, Christina, what was his, uh, job change? He was, um.
Small, small group assistant, uh, we have students, um, that work for Harvard.
That's right, that's right, sorry about that. Um, okay, intervention teacher, number 17. Um, that is it for the agenda. Let me turn to our meeting notes from November 1st. Two, 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 I think I covered almost everything. Um, the PD listed on the agenda, that's going to, uh, be concerning some ELA stuff, and also some math topics, including complex math tasks. Are complex math tasks, that's a term of art, right? Complex, it's a term of art. Complex math tests doesn't just mean the math task is complex, it's in a way of.
Actually, Dr. Vinny, would you like to explain? We don't have that for here.
Yeah, it's a special, I'm trying to speak into my throat.
I'm good, I'm good.
Um, it's a special type of small group work that's supposed to differentiate and challenge kids at the same time, and particularly, uh, structured for deep tracking math.
Fantastic, so glad to see we're doing that. Um, one second. Uh, we talked, uh, we're, we're trying to focus a little more on communications in our meetings. Thanks to Allison and, uh, uh, I think Agent Boris has been, uh, pointing out a lot of issues with us. So thank you to all those folks. Um, one issue we've talked about is the district sending out emails as PDFs. I think we've gotten a great deal better about that, um, but we do still have a ways to go. Sometimes, you know, staff forget, or there's important information on a PDF that can be hard to put into the body of the email, but we are making an effort to ensure that critical information, you know, about early closings or testing, is always in the body of the email that parents get. So you don't have to click three times to get to it. Um, we talked about improving the systems by which communications go out into different buildings to avoid errors, um, and we talked about the sort of perennial problem of wanting to inform our community members and parents about things happening in the district without also overwhelming them with information, because we all know that we get 20 emails a day, and we stop reading, but we also all want to know all that information. So the district is aware of that, it's working on trying to, uh, fine tune the flow of information in that way. Let's see, um, if parents do notice errors or lack of clarity in communications, they should definitely reach out to principal so that we know what's happening, and if there are, there are issues that need to be resolved. And thank you to our teachers and principals for continuing to approve our communications. Um, we looked at a couple of policies, there are three, there are three policies. There are, um, there are the same policy for staff and for support staff. So there's supposed, I didn't say that very clearly. There are six policies, but we, uh, there are three pairs of policies. Examination for cause, that is when staff person, the district wants to send a staff person to be physically or psychologically examined for some reason. It's not something that happens a lot, it's a mandatory policy. Um, it sounds a little silly to talk about it, but it is what it is. An attendance policy and a right of privacy policy. Uh, the committee members had not read these in detail, but we all sort of skimmed them, didn't see anything immediately alarming. Again, these are recommendations from our policy services, they're not policies we invented ourselves, um, that everybody should certainly take a close look at the policies before we vote on them for first reading at the next meeting. And that is all I have, thanks.
Any questions for personnel?
I know, thank you. I just wanted to thank you very much for putting communications on the agenda. That's awesome, I really, really appreciate it.
We should have done it a long time ago, thank you for the input, and to Allison as well.
And then we move on to, uh, policy, which is me. Um, we did meet, uh, the policies come to us. Uh, we talked about the new sick leave policy, um, the regulations, I believe, we are on here as well, for secondary regulations, basically just what the state wrote. Um, and then we have our sick leave policy. So we talked about it a bit, it will be part of negotiations, because we need to prepare with the contract, with what the policy says, um, and I think our association's been working with, back to the project in the meantime, um, but that will be coming up through discussion. The other one, one of the policies we looked at was one way to religion of the schools. Um, we weren't comfortable with the way it was written, so, um, we had questions about it, so we sent it off to our lawyers, and we'll get more closely, that is what I'm supposed to write now for the first reading. Um, and then the other one is the school threat assessment, also the end is based on legislation. Um, and, uh, the policy there is pretty much marrying the legislation, it's telling us later to, uh, school threat assessments, which is teaming people from the district, um, uh, reviewing the students who may have some needs that need to be there, um, for both the student safety and safety of the school, so that's what that policy is about. Um, the last one on there was, uh, we looked at was the co-curricular activities, that's an update, and was, uh, somebody else said that, um, advisors to, uh, for clubs and programs at the district have to be certified teachers. Um, substitutes are included in that category, subs- of certified teachers. So all our advisors have to fall under those categories. Um, and that is it for policy. And you have those on for first reading today, along with the ones that Anne was talking about, personal. Any questions?
I'm just glad you pointed out the religion one, Carolyn, that was, that was wise. We, you know, to, to clarify, we want to make sure it's clear that the district is not sponsoring religious programming, even as we are trying to lead moral for staff and students to express themselves in accordance with the Supreme Court's, uh, recent case law.
Exactly, yeah, so we'll see what Jonathan's, uh, he'd want to say about that, maybe. Please don't get one, it was back to us.
As we pointed out, the policy did seem to, it almost seemed to say that the district could have, you know, prayers at graduation sponsored by the district, and that's not something we're comfortable with, unless of course, we are required to allow that.
That was mandated, what we have discretion on.
Right, exactly.
That was the one.
So thanks.
Okay, and we're moving to public comment. Private park for education, welcome to public participation, and preserve this time for your comments. Board policies, 0164 and 0167, established and rightfully divided public, participate in public meetings. So this is our first public comment, um, and it is three minutes, so, uh, let's see, one hand up, anybody in the group speaking? Go ahead, who goes? Happy happy, who were, Fox, I'm your first.
I might have to come back, it's just three minutes. Um, Keith, the president of the private park education, so she can just stop me when you need to. Um, tonight, I would like to highlight for the board, um, some of the many HPDA pride and past events and, uh, sponsorships that our amazing teachers and educational support professionals have been organizing and participating in, in our various schools. Uh, Pride in Public Education is a campaign that shares the successes of New Jersey's public schools while building community support and involvement. We started this year at Bardell School, uh, where we sponsored ice cream and popcorn with the principal as a back-to-school kickoff on August 30th. Students and parents were invited to drop off school supplies and meet their teachers and the principal. The HPDA provided popcorn and a Mr. Salty truck to engage and entice more students and their families to attend and familiarize themselves with the school, and to meet their teachers and staff. The HPDA also sponsored a bookmark making station at that event. Uh, we did a first day of school table, where we hosted the table as a back-to-school welcome. As students arrived on the first day, families were encouraged to sign up to receive our community newsletter, and we provided water bottles and pencils. And we went to the Irving Preschool Open House, where the HPDA was there to welcome our newest students and families with a book to read for the first day of school. We, as you know, held our meet the candidates night, so that everyone could listen and hear from the candidates running for the board of bed. We just did, uh, helped out with the DECA Make-A-Wish Carnival. That's the high school's DECA club, host of the annual Make-A-Wish event. This was on October 20th. The HPDA worked with the club to advertise the event to the community through our social media and by passing out flatters at all of our district back-to-school nights. The HPDA also provided a popcorn booth at the event. Then we had Bardell, Ethic, and Student Council Not So Scary Halloween Night and Costume Swap, which happened on October 30th. Families were invited to enjoy a family-friendly Halloween movie, as well as an opportunity for families to recycle their old Halloween costumes and pick others up for families that may not be able to afford them. HPDA provided, we dusted popcorn, water bottles, a metallic trick-or-treat bag, um, uh, other supplies and costume materials to start that collection. On November 1st, we helped sponsor the bilingual parent advisory committee event.
30 seconds.
By providing food and beverages for our families. We have found that offering a meal has helped increase attendance, and it also provides an opportunity for our staff to sit together with our families. I'll come back on the next one.
All right, thank you. And we have one, uh, one hand raised online, so if you want to, uh, introduce yourself, introduce yourself, so, um, who else are you representing?
Hi, I'm from 423 Harson Avenue. Uh, good evening. I, um, had seen the Department of Education, uh, for the district that had received the plan of tutoring funding, and I didn't see how it's, uh, on the list, and I was wondering, um, is, uh, we're going to receive funding at a later date, or if you have any insight into our application for that funding?
Typically during public comment, we don't, we don't respond, we hear your question, and Dr. Posia will follow up with you to, um, explain our process on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, I think you cleared me up there. Any other, uh, comments? See, none, we're going to move on. Um, and I guess President's Report is next, maybe, I can talk a lot. Um, but I did want to share, uh, the two meetings that I went to, um, and some of us were at, at each of them, so, um, on October 18th was our first strategic planning meeting. Uh, it's the first of three meetings. We, it was well-attended, we had 67, 60 people who turned out here at the high school. Um, it was a good turnout, not as representative of the diversity of the community as we would like, so couldn't really want to work on, you know, the projects. Um, planning, we need a normal audience in general, how we reach out to the community to get more diverse, uh, representation. But it was a great group of people who were very engaged in the process. Dr. Posia presented on the state of the schools, and, uh, so that was a good presentation to kick it off. And then people worked in small groups that had been free-range by, uh, Patty Reese who was also presenting for the Jersey School Boards, who facilitated this process. They worked, they've come up with a list of strengths and challenges for the district, um, and then each group presented their, their list. Of course, there were many common themes in the list. Uh, Patty will be, um, reviewing and that, and collating that data and sharing it with Dr. Posia, who will put that on the website, hopefully that will happen soon, when the school boards is next week, so she's been busy. But we'll get to see, everybody will get to see the results of that first strategic planning meeting. We meet again on January 17th, and, um, we really hope that everybody who came in the first place comes again, but also it's totally open to anybody, you don't have to be the first one. So we'd love to see the greater tangents, because we're not, we're not going to repeat that process, it moves on from there. And we take the strengths and challenges, and I believe prioritize challenges, prioritize and begin to come up with, um, I think, country specific ways to move forward, uh, organizations, I guess, is, uh, how we go next. So that was on the 18th, compared to come back in January. We also had, um, the district had their first central leadership team meeting of the year on, um, 29. And that's chaired by Dr. Posia and Keith, uh, for, uh, as president of the association. It's made, it's a group that's made up of representatives from each school building, staff and administration, uh, board members Allison and I represented, um, people who also sits on that, so please, at some point, we'll, we'll expand that. And, um, and members of the association, representatives of the association. Um, and they, we talked about, uh, some of the topics we talked about was the impact of the changes in start times. Uh, and how, first of all, how we determine the impact of changes in start times that we've done this year. And the group came up with a four-question survey, this is a recommendation for a four-question survey. Um, the way to get a strong, we hope, a strong response will be, it's going to be attached to Genesis, to report cards, so that when parents go into a report card, which will be at different times for different buildings, um, they will have to respond to these four questions or whatever, so a full number of questions before they connect the report card. Hopefully that will get us a good response, so we're just going to see that data. Um, and each school building is also gathering data on places to school and other attendance issues, so the, the central leadership team will see some of that as well. We're also on that survey, they agreed to add a calendar question, um, because that's always a challenge every year, what holidays, holy days, holidays are most, uh, uh, most needed in the community, so we'll be questioning some holidays in the calendar and religious holidays. The other thing that central leadership talked about was, um, some chronic absenteeism data that, that has been a concern, uh, the district, we heard that these district principals are taking that on and creating activities and plans and themes, um, for each dis- each school district, each, uh, school within the district. Um, I saw in Bardell that their theme was present and proud, and, um, they put out that there has been a 14% improvement from last laptop, and this one, I believe, I still have a soft wire. So I, you know, hopefully these, um, all the different activities and focus on, and make a difference and, and improve the service we have at attendance. Um, one thing that we learned that was interesting and concerning is that, um, that what they talked about, there's displaced children, or children that are homeless, um, impact our chronic absenteeism. Um, displaced children is a serious issue for many, many reasons, or data not necessarily, but it is an impact. If they take three, four, five days to send transportation to their new school, um, they look chronically absent on our data. And unfortunately, at this point, we have a very high number of students. I believe we can talk about 37 students versus typically we have on two or three. So it's a high number of students in this category, obviously a concern for many reasons. Um, and the last thing on central leadership team was that they're going to be working on where to work at facilities, and where there are shared facilities in the district, what are some recommendations, so which will get some information, they'll help us when we're looking at this referendum or other, uh, facility needs, so that central leadership team will figure it out as well. Um, and that's it, for me. And then we move on to all business.
37, 37 kids.
37 kids, it's just.
That's right, so, yeah, so.
37 intensive number, just to be clear.
37. Thirty-seven num, oh, did I say percent? I meant to say thirty-six.
No, not percentage, thirty-seven is due to...
Thirty-seven, yeah, that's what I meant, sorry.
That's fine.
I don't know what I said. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's mind-boggling. Obviously, I had no idea it was that hard.
I felt the need put out there because it's such a...
Yeah, that's...
Our district is somebody waiting for most of these students to arrive. You know, it means that they are in school somewhere, but that they're, obviously their housing is not. It's very fragile.
I mean, I know for my own clients, different districts don't, different districts do not make it easy for homeless students, even though in our kin event, I'm supposed to. You know, you can have students whose prior schools won't release their records. I'm sure that we are good about that, because I know we always have been very attentive to the kin event, but I would imagine that if students are going back and forth, they may have difficulty. It's really unfortunate.
Any other old business topics you could work right out in your new business? So, okay, then we move back to public comment. And once again, public part of education welcomes your own public participation. We have reserved this time for your comments. And then Keith, again, it's like you're all straight things you're doing.
Bye. I left off with our bilingual parent, did you need to say something else? I'm sorry. Very good, okay. Bilingual parent advisory committee, where we provided food and beverages. We also provided crafted materials to engage the students, staff and families in community building and language learning. While working on these apps, teachers were able to share vital information with the families about their children's education. We have some upcoming events for Pride. We have Irving Family Movie Night on February 22nd. That's hosted in conjunction with the PTO, and obviously providing popcorn. We have the Irving Spring Gala on March 30th, also co-hosted with the PTO and more popcorn. Irving School Picnic on May 23rd. HPEA will be providing an outdoor activity toy for students to bring home to help promote spending time outside with family. And then we move on to our FAST program, which is under Pride. It stands for Families and Schools Together. The goal of FAST is to recruit parents and families and their children's education through programs and events to help improve student achievement and ensure that families feel welcome and connected to our schools. We have a three-part wellness event series, which will kick off with a family fit night, which is like a dance night at Bartle. There will be a assignment for that. And then there'll be two follow-up family fit nights in the spring. The dates will follow. But the second family fit night will engage family, students, and staff together to get healthy and fit. The event will focus on yoga, mindfulness, meditation, and affirmations. Students, parents, teachers, and support staff will each receive a yoga mat and a water bottle to continue learning at home. Then we have a three-part author visit. We'll be bringing in Matthew Pena, a New York Times bestselling and New Very Middle winning author of seven known adult novels. This is part of our annual author visit series that we're doing. All parents of the primary, elementary, middle, and high schools are invited to attend. Everybody is welcome. Also, this spring, we're going to sponsor three STEM nights, two at Bartle and one at Irving. We have a math night for Irving and also a bingo for books in April. I do want to note that Pride has worked very closely with the principals of the elementary schools, Jen Maff and Megan McAllan to bring all of this and make these events possible. And we want to give a really special thanks to Mariah Bassis, who plans and organizes all of our Pride events, and Amanda Yance and Emily Roselli, who plan and organize our FAST, and Kaius Legendre is here, who just ran our bilingual parent night, which was a really big success. So hopefully that shed some light on all the stuff we're doing, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much. That's amazing impact on our students and our families. Thank you.
We were just saying how good it is to hear that stuff. We have, yeah, get that across the table. Thank you.
We have one more public comment, Rose.
Hi, everyone, Rose DiMarzano, 440, Cedar Ave. Actually, Mr. Prescott, I thought that was great, all the good things that you were sharing with the community. I was just wondering, with some of us that actually use the district app, if it's possible, not only can we update and clarify, there's some confusion with like picture date earlier in the year, but can we put a lot of those things into the app? I'm not sure. I understand some of the things were maybe PTO-sponsored events, and I'm sitting there trying to like write these things down to like take it and make, you know what I mean? Is it possible to use the app for that kind of stuff as well?
Thank you, it's a great suggestion. I see that from the podium, so.
Sure.
But, yeah, we'll have to carry that here. Any other comments? See none. I'm Louie Jurick, who's second.
Second.
All of you. Thank you very much, everybody. And I'll have a great week off. Oh, yes. Welcome up to the week, thank you very much. You're welcome, Louie Jurick.